Mrs. Theodore?
Here.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Here.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes, we have a four. Please stand.
I am the president of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
That was led by members of the League Battle of the Books team. Mission statement: The mission of Norwich School District is inspiring educational excellence in a nurturing environment. Celebrates the success of the League Battle of the Books team.
We'd like to welcome the members of our Battle of the Books team for joining us to share their experience, led by Mrs. Trivio. Come on.
I'm Erin Chilie, I'm in second grade here at every school, and I've had the pleasure of being the Battle of the Books coach this year for this fine group. We actually, nineteen students participate this year, so we broke up into two teams. That way they have more opportunities to participate in the actual battles. So they're going to tell you a little bit more about their experience. Maybe you can just start from the first school group.
Battle of the Books is a club organized through Eisenhower Library for students in fourth through sixth grade to become familiar with the literature. Literature. Our question to the test is, should we send our fellow team to the neighborhood of that school? There is school students on the team standing. I found there to be five weeks Battle of the Books. If I don't find any, it's one of those. Battle of the Books is a project by Eisenhower Library, the collection of students who participate. There are the items, the council, those who wish to participate, students that experiment with the book. There are three jobs for participants to do during the battle, which keeps them fully engaged. This year, we had a number of students set a personal goal to themselves and reach it by the end of Battle season. Each number of two or three minimum of the number of books under the little chest of the metal box. Do you know the number currently? One and then one. Books three, books six, um, books seven.
So the minimum for fourth grade is six books. It goes up from there. The most rewarding thing about being the Battle of Books this season was seeing how these kids really put themselves out there and read books that they normally wouldn't have read. I heard comments over the season of, "I would have never done something like that. I really enjoyed that. This is a series." So it really did get them to enjoy books more. It got them at the library a lot more and just engaging with the community, other students from everywhere in school. So it was a great experience, and they all did really well so much of a problem.
All right, so before you leave, I think we're gonna come up there and take a picture.
Okay, so say books. Books! Certainly, our welcome to state for our board meeting tonight, but we do understand we have some things to do along. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Mrs. Trivio.
Thank you. Good job, Ellen.
Action item. I think, oh, I'm sorry.
So at Giles' school, I would like to celebrate our eighth graders. They had the fluid power challenge. They really did an awesome job. The projects that the groups developed were really impressive. I would like to thank Trident College and Ridgewood High School. They fund the program for us here at District 80. And especially like to thank the eighth grade science teacher, Mrs. Vallee, for all of her work. She gave up a lot of her time before school, after school, during lunchtime, so students can come in and really complete the fine details of their projects. And they did a wonderful job, so just wanted to celebrate them for that work.
I'll go ahead and I just wanted to celebrate, actually, a number of our students. April is Autumn Acceptance Month, so I really wanted to take the time to just kind of recognize the neurodiverse individuals that we have within our buildings, truly incredible individuals. According to the CDC, one in thirty-six children has this condition. And one of the things that I've been really working on with the staff is really making sure to bring awareness to the fact it is a truly social communication disorder. It's just a difference in the brain, that's all it is. And I think it's been really great that we are starting to recognize so many of our students and just recognizing that there's a different way to learn. So again, just taking that time to celebrate them this month.
And then I have the final celebration today. Just want to celebrate our system principals, Mrs. Carnell and Mrs. Arons. April is a system principal recognition time, so we want to celebrate both of them for all of their hard work. They see the students when they're having a challenging time, and work with them to build back up their strength in being a student here at Giles only. And we just want to thank a little bit of them for all of their work. It's all the people. Did I do the right one? Did I do the wrong thing?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being with us. The next summer, thanks for it.
Action item. Consider motion to approve the assembly as modified, with the modification being the removal of sixteen B. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Commander, standing. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. McPhillips? Yes. Mrs. Theodore? Yes. Mrs. Mala? Yes. Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes. Motion passes. Recognition of visitors. Thank you for coming. Correspondents received. Do you have a report?
No.
Other participation. Written?
Yeah.
Administrative reports?
Most of my information today is in my discussion notes, but just wanted to share with you that you have at your table tonight Dare, the Dare graduation invitation, which is May fifteenth, and also an invitation to eighth grade graduation. You could please let Mrs. Peters know if you will be an attendance for either of those events. And that is it for me today.
Okay, special education, Mr. Mack.
Yeah, so a couple of things. We did just pull our most recent sped data days for trimester two, a little bit delayed, but we actually have some really great data. We had over ninety percent of our students meet all of their individual goals, so we just keep taking up every trimester, which is wonderful. Our team is doing a great job with that, you know, working on those individual goals. E S Y, we moved to our second phase of this, so we've actually have teacher recommendations for E S Y. We're now working into parent registration, so that is going on currently and will go through the first week in May. Just prior to this board meeting, we actually held our annual timely meaningful consultation. This is actually a requirement for our I D E A, just to make sure that we have that opportunity to discuss how we are supporting students who are parentally placed in non-public schools, who have special education needs. So that is what we're doing to help our community at large. The last piece has been our fourth and fifth grade transitions have also started, so this is also an exciting time for us to bring up our rising fifth graders, see, talk a lot about what Giles is going to look like and how we're going to support them and their families. That's our report.
Great. Giles School, Mr. Giff.
Thank you very much. We had just completed a very successful spring book fair, April ninth through April twelfth at Giles. Thank you to the P T A, especially Mrs. McPhillips, for organizing it, running it, getting staff, setting it up, working it, and then taking it down and then resetting up the library again. A lot of work, but thank you so much. We're very grateful for that. We had a new, this year we went with a different company in the spring, and it was very positive. So, so thank you, and thank you to the P T A as well. I'd like to thank the P T A for the purchase of soccer uniforms for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The P T A was very gracious this year. They purchased softball uniforms for boys and girls. They purchased scholastic ball. They purchased the... Cheerleading. They purchased soccer, and I know I'm missing one. I feel like one. Scholastic softball. There's one of the four different uniforms, so they did wonderful, so we really appreciate the P T A for doing that. On April eighth, the students and staff were able to experience the solar eclipse. Each student and staff member received glasses so they can experience the solar eclipse safely. Staff has begun the process of planning next year's student schedules. This is a huge undertaking by staff and then an even bigger task by Mrs. Arons. So we're already prepping her with coffee every day to keep her going, but she's doing an amazing job. This process takes months to complete, so we've started it, and we'll be releasing schedules at sometime over the summer. End of the year activities, Thursday, May ninth, is our fourth grade fly-up night from six to seven-thirty at Giles School. Monday, May thirteenth, is our seventh grade Springfield field trip. Wednesday, May fifteenth, is Dare graduation. Doors open at eight forty-five. Ceremony starts at nine A M. Monday, May twentieth, is the, through Wednesday, the twenty-second, is the eighth grade Washington, D C, field trip. Tuesday, the twenty-third, the band will go to Great America. Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, is the BMX Assembly sponsored by P T A. That's also a bully prevention program. Thursday, May thirtieth, is Field Day sponsored by P T A. Thursday, May thirtieth, is the eighth grade field trip to main event. Friday, May thirty-first, is the eighth grade dance. Monday, June third, is eighth grade graduation. Gates open at six fifteen. Ceremony begins at seven o'clock at Ridgewood High School. Tuesday, June fourth, is the rain date for the Field Day. June fifth is our Giles May Award Assembly at Giles. And then our last day of school is June fifth with dismissal at eleven fifty. So as you see, May is an extremely busy month. It's jam-packed for our students and staff, but they all deserve it, and they did a great job. So that concludes my report.
Please pull Dr. Rebiola.
Thank you. So I have some items that overlap on my report from Mr. Viki, so I'm not going to go through every item there, but one of the things I wanted to mention was at a recent P T A meeting, we discussed the option of potentially having a community painting event at Lee to help with some of the hallway painting. There was some positive feedback from the P T A that seemed very supportive, so I'm continuing to work with P T A, Miss Buzzick, and our buildings and grounds team to see if that's something that we can, you know, make happen. Also, lots of upcoming events here at Lee. Next week, we have the third and fourth grade Fine Arts Night on the twenty-fifth. We also have a preschool family engagement night on May fourteenth. It'll be before the board meeting, so I didn't know that that date probably will be revealed. May twenty-first, we have our Karen Garden Roundup. May twenty-third, we have our first and second grade Fine Arts Night. May thirty-first, we have Field Day, and then Karen Garden Celebration during the School Day on June fourth, and preschool celebration is an evening event that June fourth. In addition to that, our end of the school year, we do an E D C countdown, so that is coming up, I believe, towards the end of April, April twenty-ninth or thirtieth, I believe is when that takes off, so just around, around the corner, and we're starting to, you know, like Mr. Viki says, a busy month, you know. Hard to say that we're winding down, because really there's so much that we're ramping up to, you know, to finish up while the, before the school year. Next, please fire a board.
Forward, committee. Discussion of the report, forward policy development.
Yeah, we're going to talk about policy in the discussion report today.
Building and grounds. I imagine the admin officers will be able to all those children.
They've started the floor today. The ceiling is in. Floor is the last big major piece, so once the floor is put in, a couple of little things that are happening, but we're just about ready for act. We haven't finalized through West Forty for occupancy. We're very close.
Behavior intervention, the report, negotiations of human resources. Nothing currently to report. Finance, we give up in our May meeting, we will assert the, that would have been in a finance committee meeting. Make it a committee of all. Education recap, what's sort of happening?
At the May fourteenth meeting, we will have a tentative, we'll do the tentative budget amendment for FY twenty-four. As you might recall, we decided to amend the FY twenty-four budget purely because we have additional grant funds, and we want to make sure that the budget shows that additional grant funds. Specifically, one of the major was P F A, how we get additional students in there that we didn't know about. So we'll, on May fourteenth, during the meeting, we will have the tentative budget, and then on June, figuring the date right now, sixteenth, I think it is, we will have the, is that sixteenth? We will do the budget here. amend the budget. Eighteen? Eighteen?
Now, the May fourteen meeting, is that going to come with the preschool family engagement?
No, that's from five to six, and then four days will start after that. That's a great night for the kids. It's a storyteller coming in on, on, on.
Communications, very glad to see, not this past Monday, Monday prior, the first edition of the community newsletter was about, went out, looked great. Did they get any sort of feedback?
The only feedback that I received was from some individuals on the teaching that thought it was really great, because we sent it out to the staff as well, that thought it was really fun to see and really liked the highlighting of the different programs. That was a great idea to send out. I did blast it out to the district and to the staff, and then I also put it on the board website, under, we used to have a spot called Correspondence, which to my knowledge, never used, so I changed that into newsletters. So on that website, under Board of Education, under Newsletter.
Okay. Norwich Park District, I don't know of any...
No, nothing.
On to discussion items.
Great, thank you. So I start off as a two every month, having that a belief thing for the month of April. The belief thing for April is believing in our community. We have a unique opportunity here in our school district, not only to impact the lives of our students, but also to impact the lives of the community members of which we serve. By actively supporting and believing in Norwich and Howard Heights, we can foster surely a sense of belonging, instill values of empathy, acceptance, and social responsibility in our students, and then create positive change within our community. So this month, we continue to work together to strengthen the bond between the school and the community, enriching the lives of everyone involved. So we're very excited about being able to celebrate our community in the month of April, which happens to have the Norwich Kindness Day, Norwich and Howard Heights Kindness Day coming up as well.
That's this Saturday?
This Saturday. In the business section, I have listed all of our open positions at this moment. We are very busy interviewing and trying to find our right candidates for our open positions. We do have one candidate today that we're hiring on our agenda, and expect to have many more next month. So just listing some of our open positions that have been, that are all listed on our website. Also, in our business section, I wanted to give you just a quick little update on grants. I did submit a application last week for the Stronger Connections Grant, which is new through the state of Illinois. This grant works on building security, so I did submit that for all of the automatic door locks. It was just, we had a lockdown today at Giles, and I was sharing with the two police officers that were there, that the very first time I attended a lockdown was at Ridgewood High School. And I just went there to see, to watch it, to see how it happened, you know, because we had not done it yet in District eighty, and this was ten years ago, probably. And one of the things that happened at Ridgewood High School is when the lockdown was called, all the doors automatically locked. All the doors closed, they locked, and they kept if there was an intruder, kind of kept the intruder from getting into different parts of the school. So this grant and this security system will bring us that same type of system here in District eighty. New week of Forward Education has already approved us to go out and bid on the lock systems. This is something that our B and G staff would be installing as far as the gateways that need to be in the hallways, up into the ceilings, in order to have all those doors to be able to connect, so that you can have an emergency situation and then everything can close. This will also put in all of the locks on every classroom door, every office door, so that those lock locks that you see, like in the preschool area right now, will be in all of our classrooms. This will allow everything to stay locked and secure. We will then be able to, on an evening event night, if it's our event or we're doing a rental, we will be actually be able to lock out whole sections of the school, which will keep everything much safer. And so we're really excited about this grant. I put in for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which will cover the installation and the locks. We do also have, which we're waiting to hear about additional information on, is the Giles Infrastructure does have some money for these locks as well, that grant. When I spoke with the individual from the state on the Giles Infrastructure Grant, she assured me that it's still in the loop and they're still working on it, but apparently everyone in the state has approved this grant, even though it's at the governor's desk. So we're waiting to hear back on that. She said it will still be quite a few months, still. But everything that we have is turned in, everything that we have to complete before the grant is turned in. So excited about those two opportunities. We also put in, Dr. Raviola and I worked on a grant for a computer science grant to the state of Illinois. This grant would fund our street program effort. So we're very excited about this opportunity. This one is a little more limited, it means there was only three or four million dollars in this grant, so it is going to be difficult to get this one. But, you know, we threw our hat in the race and hope that maybe we'll get something. And again, we put this in for a teacher and for the program here at every school. Then I just want to let you know that our preschool for all grant has been extended another year, automatic through the state of Illinois. So we are in, technically, we're in year two right now, so, and this is a three-year grant, before you have to redo your R F P for it. So they have notified us that we wouldn't have to redo the R F P for two more years. We are expecting monitoring next year from the state, which we are absolutely ready for and happy to welcome the state's people to see a wonderful program we have. We are, we got preschool screening on the twenty-sixth of April, and that should bring us up to our full amount of a hundred students at this point, which is really exciting, very exciting. And then just to remind you that our S R A R P grant is in the final phases. That grant is going for a variety of things. There is one staff member in it, a social work position, and then the rest of the money is being used for all of our after-school events that are happening right now, tutoring and social emotional groups, and then also for all the chilers. Currently, right now, we are waiting for one of the lead chilers to be installed. The second, there are two lead chilers that are being installed. One is here, and we have it in storage, the second one we're waiting for. We are thinking the one that is here and in storage, we're going to be looking at putting that out probably April twenty-sixth, which is a school improvement day. And we have the staff going over to Giles, we've already worked with the Norwich Park District. Because what happens is we have to close out the street, they need to pick up the old chiller, which is above here. One is on this roof, and then one is right above that little area over here. They need to pick that up, take it down, pick up a new one, and put it up. So we're almost at the end of that, so all those funds have to be used by September twenty-fourth, September of twenty twenty-four, and that is the end of the COVID S R P. Coming to an end. Just giving up to them now. Moving over to policies. Policy one thirteen has been updated on our website. What we're in the process of right now in April is taking our individual changes that we did to a couple of different policies and making sure those are updated as well. So that, we should have that soon. I will keep the board updated when those are updated. And today, at your seat, you received policy one fourteen book. Today, I'm not asking you to approve that. Next month, we'll take a look at those a little more in depth, and we will pass them on first read, or ask to pass them on first read, and then we'll pass them on final read, second read, and June. What we were anticipating in one fourteen did not happen. We were anticipating a large change to policy language for Title Nine, sexual harassment, another piece on the comprehensive sex standards, but we have not seen that, that did not come through. The state is saying that they are not ready, and we should see that in sometime this summer. And just finally, tonight, on our agenda, I am asking you to pass a language change to policy two point two seven two, and this is retirement incentive for educational support for children. I provided for you in word packet today what that language looks like to change. Moving on to finances, as I already stated, we will, on May fourteenth, look at the tentative budget meeting during our regular meeting, and then on June, we'll have to start to do a meeting with a budget here. And then, as far as the other part of finances, we are actively working on ending the FY twenty-four budget, and then, of course, planning the twenty twenty-five. Working on that already. So my Buildings and Grounds section tonight, I'm very excited about. So hopefully, you've had a chance to take a look at this in board book. But we have finalized the plans for the P F A preschool playground. So this is going to be located on the, right off of the grass area that is on the north side of Lee, right where the asphalt is. So if you are coming outdoor seven of the building, it'll be to the right, so toward our neighbors and that wood fence. This is a two-phase project, so the first phase will put in that corn place, really nice soft flooring for the playground, and then we'll build what you see on the left, which is the little houses. There's a little firehouse there, with a red one, is a little firehouse with a little fire truck, and they can drive, and it's very cute, and it has a little house for a dog. Not that we're bringing a dog, but it's a little cute house. And then that will be a community build in August. Have spoken with P T A, and they are supporting us on the community build. I have spoken with PTA and they are supporting us on the community build. And so what happens in a community build is the company comes out beforehand and they drill and they put in all the stakes that are needed so that that's all secure before the community comes in. Then they send just one representative on that day, I presume it was Saturday, where then we put the playground together with the members of the community. And then on Phase 2 is, it kind of looks like a little smooshed in the picture, but it is another section of the playground area that's going to be what we think of as a traditional playground. Has a couple of different slides and, you know, different ways to climb up. And that will be also a corn place, which will take place in September. So once they pour that in place, then we, same thing. They'll come out, they'll put in all the posts, and then we'll put that together. I recall the red playground when we did that on community build, it was just a matter of a few hours that was put together. So they kind of hacked up this Lego, we're going to kit, put together for you where you just come in, you attach all the pieces. They stay here, they're on site, you can solve it, and make sure it's all put together and it's safe and it's, and it's good for you. The reason we're going over two years is we're using funds from the grant for FY24 and FY25. They're going to... So we're really excited about this and they look adorable. And we did have, Dr. Raviola and I had a group from PTA, a little offshoot group that we met with, the North Side of Paris.
And that's going to be the front field.
The north side of the front field. So what we're doing this summer on the front field, the par court, is we're going to be taking down the backstop and then we'll softball area in the front field, planting racks in there. And then we're going to be, this will be a fence, a fenced area. So we'll be talking about where that fence is. We may not put the fence in before this is done, but there are some advantages to it.
Do you get that part up? Because it was the street?
No, just the whole, the whole area is being moved up. It's going to be on what's on the asphalt right now. And a little bit into the grass area will be the fence. And then we're looking at, we need to purchase a shed or some type of thing for storage. Because we have a lot of tricycles and bicycles. And there is, you can't see in these pictures, but there's a little tricycle track that goes around, that they can ride little tricycles on. So it's going to be a whole different look for that whole area. And this is all very important. So very exciting. Community news. This is a new feature that I have in my discussion reports, but I, I go to many community meetings. And I thought, well, why should really be recording on top of these things going on in our community, especially since this is our Believe in the Community Month? So April 20th, Kindness Day in Norwich and Howard Heights. If you go to the Kindness Day website, there is a plethora of things going on in the community. Police are doing a lot of many different activities. The library has a lot going on. Please take a look at all the different activities. Here in District 80, our event is taking place at the school, but certainly people from Giles are welcome to attend. It's from 12 noon to 2 o'clock. And we're going to be doing some painting and beautifying around Norwich and Howard Heights. May 26th is the Memorial Day event in Norwich, which the board is invited to. They have sent us the information to reply if you will be attending or not. And they do want to know who's there so, because they do announce people's names when they come up and present a brief. So Mrs. Peters can get our week order if we feel that the board will be, at least somebody will be attending then. I'm going to take care of getting that done. And if you are going to attend, you can let Mrs. Peters know so she could actually be for our individual people. That is, I watched that actually the other day. I missed the website, I don't have the website. Wonderful, but I really have never seen that before. So last year, you know, my... July 11th through 14th is the Island in the City Fest going on at Norwich Park. And they are expecting the pool to open sometime right around there. Maybe a little bit earlier, maybe July 4th weekend. Apparently, they've been working on the pool every single day since they started. It's a great opportunity. And August 1st through 4th is the Howard Heights Fest, which will take place in Norwich. Just sharing some community events. I will keep sharing different events with you. One thing I did write on here, I will say for next month, but I'm actually pretty excited about it. September 7th, the police departments from Norwich and Howard Heights are doing an activity a day called Battle of the Badges. And this is starting early in the afternoon. And it's culminating with a 4 o'clock softball game between the Norwich Police Department and the Howard Heights Police Department, which sounds like a lot of fun. And it has many activities starting at noon, 1 o'clock for families and kids and food and, and just a lot of really fun events that'll take place in Norwich Park. So I'll, I'll talk more about that next month, but it sounds really fun. Sounds like a good time. And just last on the future, I did skip legislation this month, my legislative update. No, unfortunately, things are changing so much that I can talk to you about something today and it can change tomorrow. So there isn't anything, right now, all of the, everyone is in session and things are constantly moving of legislation. And I'm sure we're going to have, I think there are 20 different bills right now that affect schools, I'm sorry, 200 different bills right now that affect schools. So I'm sure we're going to hear a lot about this once everything kind of gets settled out. So I put that on hold for today. And then future, we are proposing if the board is accepting a 7:30 start to the May 14th board meeting next, next month instead of 7:00. We had a couple of reasons outside of Norwich School District 80 that we're asking for that change. Is that all right?
Definitely, 7:00.
Is that just for the 14th?
Just for the 14th. Just for 14th. And that's my report.
Thank you. Lot of good information. Consider agenda. I need a motion to approve 13A through 13H. I'll say it. Rita, Lorenzo, can I have a little talk?
Mr. Rama? Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzia?
Yes. Motion passes. On to board comments. Anything to bring up? Any sort of board members? Okay. To... I need a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, collective negotiating matters, student discipline, and review of closed session minutes. Get out a motion. Motion. Renzo?
Second.
Amanda, no call, please.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzia?
Yes. The motion passes. We will go into first session at 7:55, 47. On to action items. Need a motion to approve memorandum of understanding with Norwich Education Association of Teachers for contract position. Your motion?
Motion.
Amanda? Maria, no call, please.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala? Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzia?
Yes. Motion passes. I need a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding with Norwich Education Association of Teachers. Just about here. Can I get a motion? No motion. Renzo?
Second.
No call, please.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzia?
Yes. Motion passes. I need a motion to approve memorandum of understanding with Norwich Education Association of Teachers. Let me see. Okay, the last one, close to the last one of 16 after that.
So sorry.
Personnel action items. We've got to do all of those. 17A through 17C. Can I get a motion? I need a motion to approve personnel action items 17A through 17C.
Our motion passes.
Renzo, okay. No call, please.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzia?
Yes. Motion passes. So completed with the board reflection. Okay. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting at 9:51. Callers, neighbors, say aye.
Aye.
Callers, who say aye. Meeting is now adjourned.